Coming forward, I do have a couple of questions, one's for the city attorney. So if in fact we do go forward with this, will it, do we have staff that can handle the inquiry on this, or will we have to get some professionals to come in? Or how exactly will a potential study take place?
Well, I would work with Mr. Norman to evaluate what the best approach would be. One of the things that I think we heard earlier was that there's apparently already been some studies that have been done that are out there. I don't know what, for example, the county of San Luis Obispo has done in terms of reviewing this. And we know that Thousand Oaks has also imposed a moratorium, apparently Ojaias as well. So there may be others, but those are the ones that we're aware of. So we would probably start checking with them to see if they've done any studies, or if they've accumulated any studies, so that we could find what data is out there now. And then, as I mentioned before, to see what further study might be necessary with respect to Camarillo, which may be different than other communities. I mean, Camarillo's different than Simi Valley, which is different than, you know, other areas. So there may be some unique analysis that's necessary to drill down as to the issue in Camarillo as well.
Okay, great. And then I do have one other question for Andy, if you wouldn't mind coming up here again, Andy, I'd appreciate it. I just want to make sure that I heard right. Andy, you did say that there's several varieties of this. And to find out the one that works the best, I guess in your climate, I know the type of soil that you have makes a big difference in that, and obviously, how much sun. How do they find out which one would be the most beneficial for our particular environment that we live in here today? Is it trial and error? Are there studies that are going out there? And how many, do you know about how many different varieties there are in this?
Well, as far as how do they know that? I had heard from talking to growers that they were having trouble getting seed. To grow industrial hemp for CBD, you have to use, well, you don't have to, but if it's going to be economically viable, you want to use feminized seed, which is this sort of exotic process where you take the parent plants, you stimulate them with the chemical, there are several varieties that can use, and you cause the plant to go hermaphroditic, the female, and it'll produce flowers, which produce pollen. And then you take these stimulated plants and move them around in your field, and then pollinate your field and produce a seed crop that are all female, so that all the plants that come from that seed crop are female plants. That's an expensive process. I'm told the seeds cost $1, $2 a seed. So it can be an expensive product to get hold of. And with, you know, with sort of the California Gold Rush, when the regulations were adopted in April, there were a lot of growers scrambling to get seeds. And so I don't know how much evaluation there was of whether this or that seed was right for our climate. It was just, can I get some seed? And, you know, there are obviously different varieties in terms of their reputation for producing high levels of CBD, and for having stable genetics. Some people got crops that had, you know, that have a very uniform look to them. All, you know, the plants are genetically similar. Other crops are very heterogeneous, skinny plants, fat plants, short plants, tall plants. So, you know, that's what they call unstable genetics, that those seeds aren't really breeding true. So to answer your question, I'm not sure how much vetting went in to find seeds that were ideal for our climate. I think we're going to find out over the next few years by growing it in California, exactly what seeds are best. And we're also going to be producing some, I mentioned people are growing a seed, I mean, a CBD crop here, but some people, a few of those growers, are also growing a seed crop for other people next year, or themselves to grow CBD.
So we're in the early stages of all of this, in your opinion?
Yes. Yeah, I think we're going to learn a lot over the next couple of years about what the best varieties are, the low smell varieties, the high CBD varieties, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, are there any other questions of anybody? Okay, so why don't we start some of our discussion here amongst ourselves? Mr. Molche, do you have something?
I'll go first. First off, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I often, to myself, and sometimes say that I wish the community engaged with us more often. And it's good, regardless of what side they take on an issue, it's really good to see engagement on issues, and that people come out and they feel compelled to tell us what they think. So with that, I asked online what people thought. I got over 200 responses. I've printed each one of those out, I've submitted it as public comments, so each of those people who responded online can be made of the public record, and my colleagues here could also get a copy of that, in the event they didn't see it, or they don't have I got a lot of emails, I got a lot of phone calls, had people speak to me face to face when I was throughout the community. I don't like the smell of hemp. It irritates my nose, it offends my nose. Yeah, it smells kind of like skunk. I'm not particularly fond of it. We have a shop right off Constitution, so it's just adjacent, they're near the corner of Lewis and Pleasant Valley. So we're kind of catty, or kitty corner to down Pleasant Valley, where a lot of this hemp is being grown, in relation to the city. So when the wind is blowing right, you can smell it throughout our shop. We have all of our bay doors open, we have about 22 people working in our shop, and you smell it coming in. It permeates our showroom. I got to explain to our clients what that smell is, so that way they don't think we're smoking pot in the back, because the smell is pretty identical. It's hard to differentiate. I know what the smell of pot smells like. It smells like that. So we usually have to explain it away. It's good talking, it's a good laughing point, and then we kind of just proceed from there. Years ago, we have this little field that's since run fallow, because it was prime for development. I used to grow onions on that field, and the smell of the onions, man, that really, again, permeated our shop, went with throughout our shop, went into our showroom. That smell too was offensive, kind of watered your eyes, particularly as they harvest those onions. Not much different in my book, like the hemp. But we put up with it. We didn't, you know, we didn't cry about it. We let farmers do their thing. The intermittent offense to my nose doesn't supersede, shouldn't supersede, the farmer's right to farm, and his right to earn a living. The fact that hemp doesn't use pesticides, uses less water, in maybe some cases, and we'll see how it bears out, it's possibly more economical for, economically viable for a lot of the farmers. And some of the strawberry farmers I've spoken to don't intend, they intended to use it as kind of just a rotation in between their regular row crops, like strawberries and whatnot. I've specifically talked to some strawberry farmers, and they said, oh, no, I'm just kind of taking up some time, two, three months, and I'm going to get back into my strawberries, because that's what I know, that's what I really genuinely love. I understand the need for a moratorium, or the ask for a moratorium, to maintain the status quo, preserve the status quo. I don't disagree. I'm more interested in maintaining the status quo amongst the farming community, amongst our farmers, and the remaining farmland, what little we have left, whether it be, well, at least that within our own city boundaries, because that is really all we have jurisdiction over. I sympathize with a gentleman who lives across from, from the, off Pleasant Valley, across all that. I don't like the smell either. What we do tonight, whether we enact a moratorium or not, that's, the vast majority of the smell you're getting is coming off the county, and they're a whole separate jurisdiction. They're going to have to go through their own motion if you ever wish for that to go away. The sense of urgency, I just simply don't see it. We have one lot of active grow, 18 acres, which we harvested here in the next month or two. And as of right now, there's nothing else on the horizon, at least as it pertains to within our city limits, which, again, which is all we have jurisdiction over. So maybe there's an urgency out in the county, but that same urgency doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, doesn't quite exist within our jurisdiction. I think we should study it. I think we should proceed with staff's recommendation that we look into what its effects are, whether it's be odor or safety and the like. Sure, let's do our due diligence, I think that's responsible, I think that's important. I don't think we need to do it with a moratorium. I don't really, I don't see the benefit of that. Particularly going into winter, this is our, you know, we're going into our colder rainy season, and hemp is not accustomed to that. If we get a rainy season similar to what we've had last year, then I don't think the farmers are going to want to be planting that over the next, the course of the next three, four, or five months. So I would hope that that would buy us the time to do our respective study, without having to put in a moratorium. Most the, like I said, I don't like the smell either. Most of the smell that we're getting, other than that little 18-acre field within our city limits, is all coming from the county. And it surrounds us on all sides, and we have no jurisdiction over that, we have no say. Our hands are tied. For that, you need to go see your county supervisors. But within our city limits, I just don't see the need for a moratorium, I don't see the urgency for enacting a moratorium. And like I said, the intermittent offense to my nose shouldn't supersede a farmer's right to farm, and grow a legal crop on his land, and a crop that is kind of having its breakout moment, in terms of its uses, and its popularity, and how people are grabbing it, and it's a very dynamic crop. So I'm not a, I don't, I don't benefit from it personally, in any way, I don't use any hemp products. But I definitely see the value in it, and I see the economic benefit and societal benefit to it. So let's study it, but I think a moratorium is just kind of unnecessary at this juncture.
Okay, so anyone else? Ms. Santangelo?
I'm probably going to be a little long-winded. I'm going to just kind of go through it as I went through it in my mind. I'm first going to talk about the pros of industrial hemp. And actually, before, I, one of the reasons I asked for the study on cannabis was because of what we're talking about right now. And I'm really glad to hear that somebody was thinking about using Camarillo as a place for processing in a lab, because that's exactly what I've been thinking about with our industrial space. And that's why I wanted a study session for us, so that we could talk about it, and talk about not only cannabis, but also marijuana. But, you know, I know this is just the hemp, but I had wanted to explore the options of all of it, from an economic point of view. A lot of the pros for industrial hemp have been already brought up, but I also wanted to point out to everybody that hemp used to be grown here, in large amounts, in America. And it was not until about, when it was classified as a narcotic, as a controlled substance in 1937, that all of a sudden, we couldn't grow it. And, you know, that's what we used back then for fabric, for twine, for paper. And so it's not that really hemp is new to America. Hemp has also been used, but we've had to import the seeds and the fibers from Canada, mostly. So we're also, while we're learning more and more about its uses, and how useful it is, it's not new to us, it's just that we've had to import it. So with removing it as a controlled substance, now we have the opportunity to use it more, and not have to import the parts of it that we need. Already mentioned was the usefulness and crop rotation. One of the reasons that you don't need so much herbicides on it is because of the way it grows, and the canopy that it creates as it grows, weeds can't grow underneath it because sun doesn't get to it. So it's just naturally, by the nature of the plant, less chemicals are needed. It's environmentally friendly, it is, needs less water, and it was mentioned, and it can't be understated enough, that it really does sequester carbon. And that is one of the most useful things right now in our state of climate, for our environment. It also, there was just a study released that it attracts a whole bunch of bees. And I think, I hope everybody's aware that the bees in the country are actually decreasing in number, and we need bees to pollinate. So the idea that we have a crop that doesn't use as much water, that sequesters carbon, that is good for the soil, and that also helps attract bees, is a good thing. The uses, I've got some pictures here of homes that are being 3D printed out of hemp crepe. Really cool. The unique thing about the hemp fiber is that not only is it useful for textiles, paper, clothing, but it's more recyclable, recyclable, because it's stronger. So you can recycle it more times than you can with just cotton. So that's also useful. The fiber can be used, the herds can be used, hemp seed, the oils, the CBD products, oils replacing palm oils in soap, in cream, in cosmetics. I have some numbers, but I'm not going to get into like the economics of it, but it's there. So now, let's talk about the smell. And the bottom line is that smell is subjective. So somebody could get up and say, this is the worst smell ever, it makes me nauseated, I can't stand it, it's worse than the cabbage and the broccoli. Well, I smell it differently, my senses are different, it's a subjective experience. So it's really difficult to legislate a smell. You can't quantify it, you can't really measure it. I actually think that the days of broccoli and cabbage are the worst in Camarillo. I know there are some people that have genetic differences, which affects how they appreciate cilantro. So some people think it tastes like soap, some people love it, right? Same thing with the smell. So I'm sure that the people who don't like the taste also don't like the smell of cilantro. I love it. So I have a really difficult time legislating based on something as subjective as smell. I work at Casa Pacifica on South Lewis, so I'm out there in the middle of the fields. I have to drive to Target about three times a week. And for the last two weeks, I have been driving purposely down Pleasant Valley. I literally had to roll my windows down, and like stick my head out to smell it. So, you know, it's different for me, and I'm not denying anybody else's experience, that's your experience. It's just, we all experience it differently. The other thing that I noticed right away is that on the right side, city limits, is one field, smaller, but on the left side, three or four, five times as big, is the county land. So let's just say that we tomorrow went out there and bulldozed and took all that out, it's not going to change the smell, it's right across the street. So then the question comes, all right, if we're going to do this because of smell, and we're going to take out everything within the city limits, what do we do about the stuff that's across the street from the city limits? Do we have a buffer zone? And how big should that buffer zone be? How should we decide that? Do we decide it based on how often the wind blows this way, or that way? Or I just, I don't see any easy way to do this. One of the things that I hear most often as a council member is, stop taking away our farms, stop taking away our agriculture, stop building houses. Yet, we're now hearing, you know, I can't stand the smell of what's growing in the fields. So I have trouble with that. This is an agricultural community. Some things smell, and some things smell badly. It's not that I don't emphasize, I just don't think that we can legislate on it. I, the safety, I, you know, avocados are worth a lot of money, too, and I don't see
Stolen a lot.
And they are stolen a lot, but, you know, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I think most people that use recreational marijuana know what hemp is. I'm pretty sure they do. And they can also get it pretty easily, so I don't think, that's just my thoughts, so. As far as the urgency, I don't see it. I don't think anybody's, I don't think we're going to have this huge planting of hemp in the next few months. I'm okay, you know, with the study going forward, I hope that, I hope that some of that, I know that the staff, and this is no commentary about them or their work, but, you know, the study that I'd asked, I hope that it's kind of incorporated altogether. Why not? I think that's all I have to say, but I'm not prepared to support this.
Ms. Craven?
When I first moved to Camarillo, the worst smell here was, were the feedlots in Somas. And they smelled horrible, absolutely horrible. And the part of town I lived in, they really smelled bad almost all the time, but when the Santa Anas came, it was really bad all over town. And at that time, there were only a few houses in Mission Oaks, most of Camarillo was west of Lewis Road. When the feedlots went, I think everybody sighed a sigh of relief. And they went because of economics, I think. They got a whole lot more land, money for selling the land for houses than they did from the feedlots. But I do understand about smells. And before I go any further, I want to make sure everybody understands what an urgency ordinance is. An urgency ordinance is an ordinance that's only good for 45 days, and it takes effect immediately. That's the legal definition of urgency with respect to this. If we wanted to do a regular ordinance, it would be good for the rest of our lives, or until rescinded, but it would not take effect for 30 or 60 days or something after the second reading. So I think staff wanted to have it this way, with a short-term thing of a moratorium, before they went to all the work of doing what is needed for a long-term ordinance with all the backup. So it isn't that there's an emergency, it's that it's a short term, and it takes effect immediately. With that in mind, and with the smell, to me, it smells like a skunk. And I live at least a mile, maybe a mile and a half, from where the map says anything has been grown. And I smell it at my house every night. And so do my neighbors, they're all asking me, how come there's so many skunks around? And I say, it isn't skunks. But anyway, I'm not sure they believe me either. At any rate, I can support an urgency ordinance to, and I recognize that I'm in the minority, and this, with two council members saying they do not support it, I don't know what the other two say, that it will not pass, but I could support a short-term ordinance to give us time to find out more about it, even with understanding that the majority of this that's being grown right now is not within the city limits. There's a whole lot of land down there between north of Pleasant Valley, west of Lewis Industrial Park, and east of Las Poses, east of the airport, that's within the city limits, that could be planted. There's also all of the Cayega's Creek land that could be planted. And so I think it's something we need to look at, we need to consider. And we have had nine speakers here tonight. One lives in Somas, one lives in Oxnard, one lives in Ojai. And so we have six people from Camarillo who gave us their opinions, but we have more than, almost 70,000 people that we haven't heard from, even with the 200 that responded to Mr. Molche's Facebook page, and who sent us letters, emails. And so I never know who's the silent majority and who's the vocal minority. And I never know what the silent majority feels, but I do know that a lot of people, wherever I've been going lately, have asked me what the smell is. So I could support a short-term urgency ordinance that would give us time to get this sorted out.
Ms. Trindley?
Well, it's probably not going to surprise anybody that I come at it from more of a legal side. And let me kind of frame the issue the way that I see it. I see this as, if you will, a balancing act, or balancing the equities. We've received a lot of input on both sides of the issue. I've received a lot of emails, a lot of people called me, or orally asked me about it. And those conversations and those emails have been on both sides of the issue. So, you know, I really want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and engaging in a civil discourse, because that's what this country needs more of. I had the chance to, I've had the chance to communicate with people whose views I respect on both sides. And there are legitimate views on both sides. I had a long conversation this morning with a resident, and we spoke for about half an hour, and I got to explore all sides of the issue. I will say that based on the communications that I've received, there are a substantial number of people who find the odor very offensive, and have articulated to a great level of specificity that the impact of that offensive odor on them. I think if you look at it in one context, you really have, you can frame the issue this way. It's the ability of farmers to grow what they desire and keep farming economical, versus some pervasive odor issues, which at certain times, from this crop, whether it's once or twice, you know, however many, how many times it's grown per year, affects someone's peaceable enjoyment of their property. When you step back and you think about it, it's really, you're balancing one set of property rights for another set of property rights. And I think that's the way that I frame it, in my own mind, in looking at someone's property This is not a THC issue, it's not a cannabis issue, it's an odor issue. And I know that, you know, I think the, there was a comment earlier about, a comment earlier about legislating on odor issues. And I think, Ms. Santangelo, you made that comment about, basically about legislating on odor issues. And I want to say to you respectfully, that the California Legislature has done that in the Civil Code, when it's discussing nuisance issues. And among other things, the Legislature has said, well, anything, and this is subjective, granted, anything which is injurious to health, or offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property, so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. That's, that's, that's the definition of a nuisance. And a definition of a public nuisance And a definition of a public nuisance is one which affects at the same time an entire community or neighborhood or any considerable number of people. So I, you know, based on my training, I, I go to, to those kinds of citations. And the legislature's had no problem with doing that. Neither have the courts. I mean, there's a very, very well-known California Supreme Court case from the 1980s. And, and I'm just going to go to a quote in this case. The intensity of the, quote, "The intensity of the odors found reflection in log notations ranging from smell to very bad to horrible. Even when classified as mere smell, plaintiff testified that the aroma was offensive enough to destroy the comfort and enjoyment of his home and property. At other times, it was about as much as a person could stand. You could not be in it too long. You'd have to go somewhere for relief." And physical reactions included burning of the eyes and nausea. So I, I look at that and then I look at the communications that we've received and a number of them from people who are in support of a moratorium, talk about what they have experienced relative to these odor issues, you know, including nausea, including headaches, including leaving their home because of the smell. And, you know, I, I lived in Davis, I was lucky enough to live in Davis for nine years. I was, got very used to, and we've lived here for 36 years, I'm very used to what it's like to be in an ag environment. And, and I will tell you, I'm not aware, and this, again, smell is always subjective, right? But I'm not aware of other crops with a sustained odor issue like this one. I'm just not. Now again, admittedly, that's subjective, but I, I, I'm not aware of, of them. And I, I think more to the point, this is a tough decision to do. And I mean, I, I sense, I have two colleagues who are not in support of the moratorium. And I, I want to say, I don't take the decision lightly because it's a balancing act. You're balancing rights of property owners against one another. But on the, on balance, in my personal view, I think the equities here, as of right now, favor the residential owners. That's, that's my perspective. And favor a moratorium. I don't see a harm in temporarily preserving the status quo. I think it's prudent to enact a temporary moratorium pending further study. I'll note from the staff report that the County of San Luis Obispo, which is a predominantly agricultural county, has also adapted a moratorium, adopted a moratorium. Well, what does the County of San Luis Obispo know that we don't know? So I can support, I, I can support a temporary moratorium that gives us the ability to study the issues. I, I wouldn't want a temporary moratorium to be of some indefinite duration. I mean, I know Mr. Pirik has already talked about the, the timelines here. So for those reasons, I would support a temporary moratorium as staff has recommended to us.
All right. So there's been a lot of discussion here tonight. I'm going to try to make my comments as brief as possible. My opinion is that this is our only opportunity here to have a discussion on this. My feeling is that this industry is going to grow by leaps and bounds. And if we wait two years to have a discussion on this, that it's going to be too late. This is the only opportunity that we're going to have to have a discussion on this. Yes, we're an agriculture community, but we're also a community of a whole lot more. We work very, very hard to have a thriving business community, to have a thriving residential community here and be a balanced community here. I'd like to talk to the residents. I'd also like to talk to the farmers. And I think most of you know here, I come from an agricultural background, have an uncle that owned a ranch in Somas, and I have cousins that still farm in Somas. And most of the farmers that I know are not only good stewards of the land, they want to make money, but that's not really why they're in farming. They have a lot of feeling, a lot of real spiritual feeling of land, if you can believe this. They really, really do. They want to do the right thing, especially Ventura County land. They have a love affair, most of them, with Ventura County land here. I'd like to have a conversation with them and see how they feel about this. I can remember when we were growing mostly a lot of, of lemons here, which lemons is still a major crop here, but I remember when the strawberry started getting more and more popular. You know, strawberry is an extremely expensive, you know, crop to grow. There's a lot of cost with strawberries, but farmers all talk to each other. It's very interesting how they all work here, this nexus with them. And they talk about what they're going to grow and they say, well, I'm not going to grow that. And next year, they're all growing what they're talking about that they're going to grow. So the word of mouth is, is pretty extensive here. So, you know, I, I'm very much aware, I've got a lot of friends and family members that use products that have really helped them. I understand the medical benefits of this. And I also understand, like I said, that, that I think this is going to grow, there's a potential that this could grow very rapidly, but, but, you know, my colleagues, in my opinion here, just my opinion here, this is our only opportunity to have a conversation with this. If we don't do it now, we're never going to be able to do it. I understand that it's just within the city limits. You've got a whole cadre of acres outside of the city limits that this isn't going to affect. But if we don't do it now, we're not going to be able to do it in the future. Again, I just want to emphasize that this is going to grow, in my opinion, really, really rapidly here. And I would really, really strongly urge my colleagues to support this and have a discussion here. There is a limitation to how much and how long and the duration that we can discuss this here. But bring in everybody. Bring in residents, bring in farmers, bring in the agricultural commissioner, of course. Bring in individuals that want to start businesses in this. Let's have a conversation with this. And this gives us an opportunity to do this. I've lived here and I can remember when we had the BI company out there and, and the smell was very odorous here. And this is, I mean, there is some smell. However, comma, there are some different varieties out there when the MBO stage is here. There may be some varieties out there that are less odorous. I don't know that. But I'm hoping if we approve this study, we can find out and we can, we can know a whole lot more in the future than what we know right now. So I would strongly urge that we go forward with this. So with that, it is, unless anybody has any other comments. Counselor, do you have any comments you want to make or?
I have no further comments.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to request a reading of the title.
This is ordinance number 1168, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, declaring a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp.
I move to waive further reading and to adopt an urgency ordinance declaring a temporary moratorium pertaining to the cultivation of industrial hemp.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes 3-2. So Counselor, do you want to?
No, that didn't pass because we need.
Well, it voted 3-2, so we need four, right?
The vote was 3-2. It had to be at least four, so the motion does not pass.
Okay. The motion doesn't pass. So with that, I'm going to call the five-minute recess, please.